I'd like to call this regular school board meeting of the DC Everest Area School District to order. First up is roll call. Ben? Shannon?
Here.
Yi?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
And I am here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, founded on the principle of justice, tolerance, and equality.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. This requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up, we have public comment. We do have two people signed up. And at this time in our agenda, we have time set aside for public participation. We value your input and interest in our school community. It is important to note that we welcome differences in opinion and recognize that we are all here because we have vested interests in our children and our schools. We would also like to remind you that the school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. The public comments presented before the board reflect only the view of the individual speaker and not the board or the district. Anyone wishing to address the board should have registered their intention to participate upon their arrival at the meeting on the sign-up sheet at the door. As a reminder, our public comment policy states participants must have a legitimate interest in district business, such as current district residents, students, parents, guardians, employees, or contractors of the DC Everest Area School District. Participants will be recognized by myself and are asked to please state their name, address, and group affiliation before beginning their remarks. To ensure that board meetings are conducted in an orderly and productive manner, all public comments are subject to the following. Time. Each statement by our participant is limited to three minutes duration and should address topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the school board. If a speaker continues past the expiration time, I will notify the speaker to stop and leave the podium. The public comment period will be limited to a total of 30 minutes unless extended by a motion. All remarks should be directed to the board and not the audience. No one may address or question board members individually. Speakers must conduct themselves with respect and civility towards others. Prohibited conduct includes conduct which is disruptive to the meeting, interferes with the ability of others to observe the meeting, or speak to the board, or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct business. This includes conduct which is abusive, harassing, or threatening, and conduct which includes the use of vulgarities or profanities. If a speaker violates this rule, you will first be given a warning and then may be asked to leave. Concerns tonight will not be addressed at this meeting unless they fall under an already approved agenda topic. The concerns may be added to a future agenda at the request of any board member. No person addressing the board should initiate charges or complaints about individual board members, or employees, or students of the district. Such charges or complaints should be presented directly to the superintendent. In the event of an individual's contact causing disruption to the board meeting and the board cannot continue its business, a motion may be made to declare a recess. With that, we have two speakers registered tonight. First up is Jennifer Yang.
Thank you. Do I need to turn this on somehow?
It looks like it's on.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Jennifer Yang, 1414 Hamilton Street, Wausau, Wisconsin, 5443. I do have children enrolled in the DC Everest School District. Dear members of the DC Everest School Board, I'm speaking to you tonight not just as a parent, but as someone deeply invested in the well-being of our students. ... this district provides. I recognize the weight of your role. Volunteering and serving on the board requires dedication, integrity, and a deep commitment to our community. You are entrusted with this responsibility because people believed in your ability to protect and advocate for our children. A detrimental decision has been made, and if not corrected, the impact of standing by that choice will cause deeper damage to the students and erode trust with the community. What message will that send to those students that were directly affected by that decision? I urge you to center your thoughts on the children you were elected to serve. You have the power to reinvestigate and apply the full scale of your policies. As you review the appeal that was sent to you, I ask you truly feel the impact of inaction, the confusion, the pain, the loss of a safe space during a critical time in a child's development, and the lasting trauma it has caused. I may be just one voice, but I speak for many that have come forward. I represent students, past and present, who are too afraid to speak out against authority. I speak for future students who will be affected by your choices. I speak for those who try to raise concerns, but their voices were silenced. And lastly, I speak as a mother who will never stop fighting to ensure that every child in this district has a safe and supportive environment, one that nurtures both their physical and mental health. Thank you for listening and considering the real lives impacted by your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mary Tao.
I do want to pass out something to the board members. Mary Tao, 506 Sherman Street, Wausau, Wisconsin, 54401. I stand before you, representing the Thor family that's behind me here. They have children who are enrolled here in the DC Everest School District. I also come here as a former Wausau school board member and a community among leader. I don't come here as an adversary. I come here to be an ally with all of you. Madam Board President Lindsay, Superintendent Dr. Casey Nye, and board members. I don't want to be here tonight. These are not the causes that I want to champion. I don't want to be a part of this community where we have unsafe environments. You all know that you have an appeal in front of you. I don't want to go public, neither does the family. But I'm highly concerned. I'm highly concerned that an unsafe learning environment is happening under your watch. I know many of you have a responsibility, and I know that you've taken an oath as board members. I know what it feels like. I've been in your position in the past. It's not easy. But remember that your mission is to create a healthy learning environment for all our kids, all our students. That means that they have to feel safe and secured when they're here. And I can't imagine that, you know, we've dealt with student-on-student bullying, but when you have a bully who's an educator, that's a problem. And I ask all of you, if you were interviewing a potential police officer and you knew that they were a bully, would you hire them? If you're a hiring manager and you were interviewing an educator for a position and you knew they were a bully, would you hire them? It doesn't feel good to be on this side of the microphone, and I'm sure it doesn't feel good for you to hear all of this. But I ask you, when you go home tonight, when you go home to your children, or when you go home to your loved ones, I want you to take the two testimonies that I just handed out to you, and I want you to quietly read how our students are feeling. And then I want you to either, in the near future, confer with each other, or with your district administrators, and I want you to ask them what is going on. That's all I want you to do, is that tonight, you read those testimonies. Those are not even testimonies that are coming from the Thor family. There will be more forthcoming. What I bring to you, and what you have been sent, were two prior testimonies and two more today, and there will be more in the weeks to come. Please do your job, keep our children safe. I'm all about educators. I support all of you, but I ask you to do the right thing in the coming days. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Tao. Next up is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote. Ben?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yi?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next up is reports and considerations. Wasbe Shannon?
This past Friday, the Policy and Resolutions Committee met to go over and finalize the final 12 resolutions that will go before the Delegate Assembly for the State Education Convention. It was a very long evening, but I'm glad I participated. And then the next day, Saturday, we had the Legislative Conference in Stevens Point. Lots of great information. Jared Solomon from COSBA came and gave a federal update, a little bit more on the state budget update. I was happy to participate on a panel of fellow board members from Chawamagon. I got that right. That one was hard to say. Hudson and Franklin. And the feedback from that was really helpful for a lot of board members to kind of network and find out and compare how you address issues legislatively, how you keep track of things at the state level. And then there was some really great information on trends in K-12 education. Obviously, we know that enrollment is trending downwards, but really good news that came out of that is that AP participation scores are up statewide, and dual enrollment is expanding statewide. So that's good news. And then, of course, there was more legislative discussion on what bills might come forward this session. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Shannon, and thank you for enduring the long night. Next up is Cisa Nine Larry.
We had a meeting Wednesday, November 5th. It was primarily focused around the presentation of the audit and the budget. Cisa Nine got an unmodified, clean opinion, which is as good as you can get in the auditing world. Talked about their general budgeting, a lot of the details that I won't grind through for you, but I did learn one thing. This old dog learned, didn't learn a new trick. Every year, the DPI, and it's pertinent to something I talked about last time here on our audit, every year, the DPI explains or describes to the auditors the things they should look for. Remember, I commented last time, it isn't 100% audit of every penny on every account. And that direction then comes from the DPI directly. So all the accounting firms are kind of bidding the same scope of work, even though it's not as I had endured previously, every penny in every account. It's the primary accounts for this year. So that's how they were audited up there, and that's how really all of our schools are audited, according to the DPI checklist of things this year, check this, 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 this. And as opposed to every opinion, every account down across, which is the kind of audit I'm used to in my former life. The comment they had, the October PAC meeting, which is the superintendent's, it's coming up the 18th to 19th, and I guess they're going to have some legal stuff there, which I guess the superiors just always love. They also had a previous one, they had a trauma speaker, Josh Varner, I'm going to get some information, said he was really good in talking about trauma that children endure, and techniques and methods for compensating them, and talking about that. And I related to Al, that, you know, I used to think, you know, when something comes up, I said, "What's wrong with you?" And now I take the perspective of what happened to you. You know, I think that's, you know, kind of the way to look at some of these problems. So what happened to you? So, and as it turns out, the Cisa Nine set their revised their board date for next Monday, or next month, on December 10th, which is the same as we have here, Siamis next month's meeting. That's all my report.
Thank you, Larry. Next up is Student Representative Eva.
So for this past month, the start of quarter two has begun with winter sports such as girls' and boys' basketball starting, who had started practices this past Monday. Our jazz band and our choir also had their first concerts within the past few weeks. SpongeBob the Musical, as what I've said in the past meetings, has their opening night this weekend with almost being sold out with many of their performers and crew staying up late to make this show, to make sure the show is performance-ready. There's also a lot of drives that are occurring at the schools, like the Operation Christmas Child food drives and clothing drives. Overall, the school year has been going by very fast with Thanksgiving break coming up within the next few weeks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next up is Superintendent's Report, Dr. Nye.
As you know, our enrollment projections are an important part of our planning, especially as we navigate our long-range facility study. We've been digging into some assumptions. One is that our 4K enrollment is a direct predictor of 5K and beyond. Historical assumption has been that 5K is basically a roll-up of existing 4K, plus some students that did not participate in 4K. But as we dig deeper into that, we're seeing that there are portions of our 4K that never actually matriculate into our classrooms. And so 4K numbers on the whole are still a fairly reliable predictor of 5K, but it's one of those areas that we've never stopped and questioned. What about that population that takes advantage of 4K but doesn't ever hit our books? So that is a population we're liking, we need to learn more about. Similarly, we're looking to check our assumptions related to open enrollment. So we have ideas, I think, some general assumptions regarding interest in virtual, and we can see numbers, especially into statewide virtual charters, neighboring districts. But we feel like it would be especially valuable right now to ask all of our families that open enroll out what went into that decision. So we're looking to work with a company that specializes in that kind of survey called School Perceptions to dig in and learn more about those trends. So School Perceptions will both directly survey all of those families specifically, so we'll provide addresses and details, but then they'll also do a follow-up interview directly with them and do a phone call. So hopefully, people don't see the spam, but for us, I think it's really a valuable opportunity to get direct feedback about what went in those decisions and to see if there's something that we've overlooked or just have been unaware of. So as we really push trying to understand, a deeper understanding of enrollment trends, those are a couple of things that are on the horizon. As you know, uncertainty continues to be the theme of all things federal funding. Although a small portion of our district budget, really less than 8%, our federal dollars were closely attuned to the shutdown's potential impact, especially on those that receive food assistance. So when I added this to our agenda, we were still under the understanding that 821 DC Everest families would not receive those benefits. However, as we know now, there's an ongoing federal and state conflict around that distribution, and it's playing out in the news. So it might not be as looming and immediate as we initially thought. So that impact, though, does not and did not negatively impact student lunch, ability for our kids to receive free breakfast and lunch at school. And so I still share that number, 821 kids, which is essentially two full grade levels in DC Everest, that it would not take long to exhaust all of our pantries, our community partners, and what's available outside of those benefits. So I know there are lots of drives happening, our students are digging in, churches, and private donations are there, but we know that hungry kids are not primed for learning, so we're going to continue to keep a close eye on that as we go forward. So. HSA reimbursement. I want to thank our staff for their patience, as well as their quick response to our confirmation requests regarding the HSA reimbursements. Of 722 impacted staff, we made 710 payments. So to have completed that process with over 98% of our former and current staff reached is a testament to the work that this team put in. So props to Dr. Strike and our finance, payroll, talent and culture teams for their work to ensure we connected with our people and that are best to make this right for them. So and again, thanks to the board for your support with that correction. So definitely a chapter that we're glad to be closing up, but really good work. A couple of things about conferences and learning. Our team has had a number of great moments recently, all connected to providing greater clarity for the future of learning in DCE. So along, under the leadership of Dr. Lindell, our PD Day this past month focused on professional learning communities that will be ensuring our curriculum is updated and continues to be both relevant and aligned. Also appreciate the work of Dr. Lindell, Dr. Rather, Mrs. Lehman, and Mrs. Braun, as they participate in the Bright Spots Consortium. So we were nominated to be a part of that based on having positive things going on. Those conversations really are sharpening our focus and allowing us to tap into districts from across the United States. I also appreciate the board's support for me to attend events like the AASAC, or National Superintendents Association, had a superintendent's symposium, and that meeting really allowed me to make a number of connections with other superintendents as we looked to identify ways to be, as a system, increasingly student-centered. So great learning for all of us and all relating to continuing to clarify what is most important for kids as we go forward. So. And then, although not yet confirmed, I want to let you know that I've learned that December 8th is the preliminary date for the signing of Brayden's Law. We anticipate that would happen here in Everest, probably at GTCC. We'd invite the board to join if they're able to do so. As sad as it is that we have to have a law like this, I really am grateful Wisconsin is taking that step forward and appreciate the advocacy, in particular of Brayden's family, to make it happen. So that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Nye. Next up is unfinished business. And we are, welcome to, we are excited to hear from the Carry the E Club, so come on up.
I'll let, yeah, Mr. Matthews come on up. And it wasn't, it was, wow, they're usually really fast. Like, the reaction time is like, you first.
What, I got up fast?
Yes.
No. They're patiently waiting, but they're athletes, so they're used to pressure. So a couple of months ago, Dr. Nye asked me to have the, our Carry the E Club come in and talk a little bit about our athletic culture. I guess, first of all, our Carry the E Club started, I started that four years ago when I became Athletic Director, just to kind of build a culture and identify leaders within our school, and then have those leaders kind of role model those characteristics with our younger athletes. So these kids are going to talk about kind of our athletic culture. They're going to talk about how our athletic culture feeds into the whole student body and the culture within the school. They're going to talk a little bit about the community and how our athletes share their expertise in certain areas and stuff with our community. And then they'll talk a little bit about the leadership and how it's role modeled and passed on from our upper classmen to our lowerclassmen. So I'm going to have them introduce themselves. They're all seniors, and they'll talk about what sports they play, what programs they're involved with. The Carry the E doesn't specifically get into the culture of specific programs because they really let our individual coaches do that. So this is just a, like, athletic department, culture-building thing, so.
My name's Cooper Ritchie, and I play baseball.
I'm Kayden English. I play basketball, football, and track.
I'm Lily Peterson. I was on the volleyball team, and I run track.
I'm Erin Block. I am on the swim team, the mountain bike team, and I run track.
So in the athletic culture at DC Everest, we hold a few mantras. One of our mantras is Carry the E. So there's a few norms that go along with Carry the E. So one of these norms is that winning is an expectation for us. We put in a lot of time into our craft, and we expect a winning result. Not only do we represent the school, but we also represent the community. So we want to be known as winners out here. We take nothing for granted, and we strive to work harder than our opponents because that's how you achieve that goal. So also, part of being an athlete at DC Everest is that we spread the culture across the school.
So homecoming is a great example of bringing the school together as a whole. Regardless if the football team wins or not, the whole school is involved throughout the whole week. So creative and artistic kids get to work on and decorate hallways, while kids in theater dress up as characters based on, like, the theme that we have. The dance team and the band members look forward to performing for their specific class at the pep rally. And then everybody is involved and has, like, a sense of connectedness, while the athletes be focused on winning our games.
Something we feel like, that connections between athletes and non-athletes are something we take pride in here at Everest. For example, at my lunch table, my friends and I, who all of us are athletes, we sit with a special education student, and we talk to him about his day, because we feel as athletes that everyone should be included, especially those who support us when we're on the field or on the court or doing whatever we're doing, and maybe even those who might not have the same opportunities that we have. So we just want to make sure they're involved with us, too. And then another super important part of Everest is our community, especially for our athletics. When you look at the differences in our schools through these recent years, you see that we have GTCC and the video board up at the football field. And it shows that when our community gives to us, it's only fair and right that we give back to them, which we see through our sports teams running camps, or even helping somebody move into their house, which we did over the summer.
Another example of our community giving back to the DC Everest teams is the Evergreen Bike Park was just recently added over at the Evergreen Elementary School. A lot on the mountain biking team. A lot of our athletes from all over Wausau participated to help get the trails ready and ridable. And they were also out there for the ribbon cutting ceremony and helped to show some younger athletes and some families looking to get into biking what our mountain bike team is all about. Another thing for me is, when I was a freshman going into swimming, I had a lot of upperclassmen and a lot of friends show me what our team was really about and how we always cheer each other on and keep, like, keep working hard all the time. And in swimming especially, a lot of our athletes cheer on the other teams, which is something that's not seen very often. But a lot of us are friends with many people from around the state. I know I have a lot of friends from Stevens Point, and then in biking, too, I know somebody from Duluth. And it's just very fun to cheer with everybody. And then it also helps to show that the freshmen, the upcoming freshmen, it shows how our team is very, like, centered around having everybody do well. And we're all, we just all like to have fun and work hard, and showing how to set a good example for the upcoming freshmen. Are there any questions?
No, I mean, we definitely understand that the pressures of student athletes are more and greater than ever before. So thank you, guys, for being able to balance school and athletics. That's great. Thank you. And I believe we have four former DC Everest athletes here. So we, we were proud of you guys.
We too carry the E.
Yeah, we too carry the E. There we go, there we go. That's, that was the end of my.
Next up, we have new business, budget calendar. Background, Kelly.
Yes. So the budget calendar is brought to the board each year for review and approval. As you know, last month, in October, we officially approved the budget for 2526, which means we can start on 2627 already. So the calendar looks pretty similar to last year. A couple of highlights, just know this is the second year of the state annual budget that always, to me, feels a little bit easier in terms of some of that assumption and planning because there are more knowns when it comes with revenue. And one change is that we're just going to move up the start of negotiations a little bit this year. We agreed to do that with DCETA last year through negotiations, just to talk about the process and start that process a little sooner, otherwise pretty similar to last year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the budget calendar for 2627 fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this? Hearing none. This requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up are the first reading of policies. Is there a motion to approve the attached policies?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these? Hearing none. This requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item C is the board retreat for the facility study information sharing. I received an email, and we will be meeting.
You're welcome.
We will be meeting February 16th from 5:00 to 7:00 right here. Please mark your calendars for that date. We have no petitions and communications, future meeting dates. Next one is December 10th, which is, again, moved up a week, so make sure you have your calendars updated for that. And with that, before I make my long motion, this is the month of Thanksgiving, so we are, wanted to extend our gratitude for, to our staff, our teachers, our community, and our students for all that, all the work that you guys all do. So thank you very much. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.8. Wisconsin State Statute 19.851D to consider strategy for crime detection or prevention, and 19.851C for considering performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body exercises responsibility, and Wisconsin State Statute 19.851F for considering personal history or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. This requires a roll call vote. Ben?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yi?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.